Alright guys, it's 3:324. Interesting how the numbers always work huh? Here's the deal, it's uh basically um this update is gonna prove the situation I just uh put the other day update on on Jaren Brandon and his drug dealing friends who are stalking me so got the update the sheriff was out there on Forest Hill Road last night which would be 3:24 Saturday during the rainstorm. 3:24 Saturday during the rainstorm or maybe the day before right in that timeframe right after the video dropped so they're they're trying to cover this up guys all the sheriffs see they won't talk to me about any of the fentanyl being put in the marijuana and they won't talk to me about any of the pedophilia where the crimes being committed but they will try to fabricate a case against me and Jaren Brandon is behind all this.
King Nun, bring it back to the board.
And I just wanted to speak to um I think the point that two brothers Campbell and we all see up here is these are for public comments on these items and I think they'll recognize that and support making sure that we keep it relevant to the topic because otherwise it gets out of hand and it really detracts from the conversation and and it's hard because most people are very respectful of the space and we're gonna have to deal with that.
So um I would ask which board member is willing-
Respectful of the space and we're gonna have to deal with that. Respectful of the space and we're gonna have to deal with that. Respectful of the space and we're gonna have to deal with that.
Okay guys on December 19th 2023 they um they had a meeting and I went over there to do a public comment on an idea that with waste management scandal and the money coming back from that that the county would be able to temporarily house people in the jail or the old um hospital right that is gonna be configured to house people and then the money would be able to build a state-of-the-art homeless facility and these people laughed it off they just you know that's not their program right they want to use your money to buy real estate at three times value that's a whole nother video that we're gonna do on the scam with uh the guy running the homeless let me hey what's the guy running the homeless thing? Who's the guy stealing all the money? The homeless? Mark Robinson. Yeah Mark Robinson is a real estate agent and he's inflating the value of these places man so we'll do a video on that man so everything that that I look at is a scandal in Toolumbe County and they don't hold office and as I'm doing this and they're filing these protective orders they're filing false documents in the court on my appeal claiming that Judge Seber was uh wasn't uh the paperwork wasn't uh filed or something like that when it clearly was I just did a video on that that piece of shit was kicked off the case that child molested piece of shit obese just a scumbag man so we need to clear these people out of here people I stood up and uh everybody in the county is entitled to a refund from Waste Management from all the overcharging going on at the dump and uh these people are just trying to cover it up and they've come at me and uh it's over man I ain't putting up with this shit especially from you fucking Jared uh Jaren fucking Brandon man you messed with the wrong dude. Uh we're gonna go ahead and play the uh phone call right now that that backs up my story and uh what they did Board of Supervisors on Tuesday this last meeting they uh they posted an agenda and then they switched it up without a 24-hour notice and brought in Ms Dow to try to say I'm a threat and all that for speaking the truth it would have been one time that I've walked into that Board of Supervisor meeting that meeting room and made any threats I haven't even dropped any F bombs in there all I ever did is say how dare you right? I am Jaren Brandon and I am not a warlock.
I'm Jaren Brandon and I am not a warlock, I am you.
May I have your attention please, may I have your attention please, with a real jaw, I'm Brandon, please stand up, I repeat, with a real jaw, I'm Brandon, please stand up, I think we have a problem here, I'm jaw, I'm Brandon, I'm the real shady, oh you with a Slim Shady, so just imitating, come on, who wants to be jaw, Brandon, please stand up, please stand up, please stand up, you can't, I'm jaw Brandon, just from the real shady, oh you with a Slim Shady, so just imi-
My name is Jaren Brandon, I'm running for District 5 County Supervisor. Now District 5 includes the historic townships of Jamestown, Columbia, Tuttle Town, Stent, and the Western County and it's the best damn district in the county.
I'm not a warlock no matter what you see on video with your own, I balls, what else am I supposed to say? You caught me red-handed, man!
Instead, I want to talk about why I'm unremarkable.
What did you say? What the fuck did you just say?
I want to talk about why I'm unremarkable.
Hold on, hold on a second, hold on, hold on, oh shit quiet, hey motherfuckers, ah ah stop, stop, no, 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 hey motherfucker, look at you, hey, look at me, hey, be right here, motherfucker, look at me, look at me, get the fuck out of my show right now, get the fuck out, get the fuck out of my show, get the fuck out of my show right now!
Yo, this is Slim Shady, okay, get this, Jaren Brandon claims to have fresh new ideas and bisexual, I mean bipartisan support, on top of that, he claims to be independent.
What up, this is Snoop Dogg, where you all in Jamestown and Columbia and the rest of my friends in Toolumbe County, I remember you all and know that Jaren Brandon is no good vote for the other guy, J-
That's right, Snoop Doggy, thank you for spitting the truth about that snake, Jaren Brandon is corrupt as hell and no good District 5, stay alive, survive, and thrive with the Father God.
Jaren Brandon said he ain't no good old bull, that is the funniest thing I've heard on the mountain, my friends in Toolumbe County, remember, I got the hat, vote for off the Schmidt in District 5, love you all in 2024, peace out.
Snoop Dogg and Slim Shady, this is Johnny Cash and unfortunately you're both right, Jaren Brandon has let the people of Toolumbe County down, Jaren Brandon, he is a little punk who has tarnished God's country with his George Soros New World Order. But Jaren Brandon wants to hurt the ranchers with the crazy climate action plan, watch out for that crazy wacko, he will sell you out to draft, he's no good.
How dare you!
This is all wrong. I shouldn't be up here. I should be back in school. On the other side of the ocean. You all come to us young people for hope, for hope, how dare you?
I'm gonna show you a video about how far I can go and uh you're gonna hear from me and I'm pointing it all out and putting the videos out because they're getting a hell of a lot more attention and a much more wider view and we are bringing the crime scene tape and we're gonna just expose all this I'm getting my story out dude because they're gonna either kill me or this thing's gonna crack off in such a way that everybody just needs to know what's going on in Toolumbe County these people are the worst of the worst man so I'm calling them out and I need your help people you need to back me up alright so we got all kinds of stuff but this is what's going on with Jaren Brandon right here it's the truth he's a drug dealing fucking uh putting fentanyl on dope dude you're out of here bro even if you win dude you're out of here you're not bonded punk you made a fucking threat at me man you're done.
They've had a bunch of cars in there including the white car that was following you going in and out of there he's been moving stuff out of there night and day he's even hired some contractors to move some of the shit.
Huh?
And he's my neighbor, he's the one that pulled a gun on my second wife and tried to falsely, well Tony's handling the cases, and tried to falsely uh have Melanie arrested, now my third wife.
Okay.
Because if he gets her arrested, she calls the cops all the time, what's going on over there, she gets arrested, he get a restraining order on her, she won't be able to testify again, so but it didn't work out, they wouldn't arrest Melanie, Melanie didn't do anything, but they wouldn't do it, then he later said there was no cameras still to his gate, he has a gate right past my property and he's got a camera there, anytime you wanna come out, walk down there and look where he lives, you let me know.
Now where where are you exactly at Meowak?
No.
Oh, you're in Columbia?
Columbia.
So where do you live in Columbia?
Well, listen, just Google his address, 11-
11?
Forest Park Drive, Columbia, you can walk on my property and take pictures of his house, my property's in back of his yard, he called six times to have me arrested within the last six years on my old property and the cops went along with it, I had to hide from them, I have the incident reports now and Tony's gonna sue the shit out of them, well Tony 140%.
Well?
Her name is, she spells it this way, it's either K-E-E-R-I, I, L-U-C-E.
L-U-C-E.
She doesn't have, found her through her sister and that's the next girl next to her that has, she's Jewish, that has the wrong, they're liberal Jews.
Yeah.
Yeah, and guess what, they went over to Jaren's house all summer to parties to donate cash for him because he looks the other way because there's a school just a half a mile away, an elementary school.
Yeah Columbia Elementary, Jaren lives right past the uh that bar right the uh-
Oh, St. Charles, he's up there by the graveyard, anyways, yeah.
There's a dude you live with man, does one of the guys have a white truck?
Uh I don't know, I can drive up there, I really go up there and walk and sit around after he gets up the door, look, he lives with two guys, he's a homosexual.
I know that.
Yeah. He's a homosexual.
That's obvious.
Um I'm very proud to introduce this, I I think that this is a normal course of business, um I'm very proud to have this and I'm proud of everybody that showed up too.
Bros, I have to tell you guys something but you have to promise that you won't make fun of me.
Alright.
Are you gay?
Me? What are you, gay?
I've had people that I think had tried to apply that to me even though I'm not a member of that community.
Petrified, I have nightmares about gay people, I have this nightmare that I go to Hollywood and find out that Mr. T is a faggot.
Based on what they thought I looked like or acted like or talked like as a kid.
Hey boy, hey boy, you looking mighty cute in them jeans. Now come on over here and fuck me up, Dan.
Um and that had led to bullying even though that's not something that it applied to me, um I'm very proud to introduce this, this is a normal course of business, um I'm very proud to have this and I'm proud of everybody that showed up too, very proud to introduce this, um I'm very-
Bros, I have to tell you guys something but you have to promise that you won't make fun of me.
Alright.
Alright, here it goes, Bros, I'm gay. Wow, you guys don't have anything to say or just gonna judge me like that?
No bro, we're not judging, it's 2023, we're all gay, right Bros?
Gay's in a straight.
Wait, what, you guys are all gay?
Yeah, even Sam's gay, he's got a girlfriend.
I mean technically I'm sexually fluid but I go both ways.
Gee, he looks-
Bros, I have to tell you guys something but you have to promise that you won't make fun of me.
Alright.
Alright, here it goes, Bros, I'm straight. This is my broken- Bro, what is this, early 2000s?
Get with the times, dig it in, you know!
Said you wouldn't make fun of me!
You're out of the frat!
Babe, look at that, come on. Alright Bros, how about this, we hit a Sig Ebb's party tonight, I heard they got a lot of hot Bros there.
We love cock!
And thank you to board and staff for the time to be able to hear this item, uh as you know many areas celebrate uh very festive and engaging pride months and celebrations that I think are positive but also recognize a history that always hasn't always been positive, so watching an interview just recently talking about a time, uh it was with a federal employee about how uh they couldn't not only just lead their department but before had they been identified as a member of the LGBT community they couldn't have held a job in government and in the federal government, uh luckily we've come a long way from there, uh I think this is an important moment for Toolumbe County to recognize this community that has been here since the beginning and it may be something we talk a lot more about at a national level but they've always been around, um they were here when it was founded, they were here when the nation was founded, they've always been a part of the history. Uh and as an ally to that community and anybody not familiar with that term that is somebody that wants to ensure these are people that have the same rights and responsibilities and respect afforded to everybody else uh under the constitution to be able to make sure that they're treated as people and that they are uh I think uh uh so given that same level of respect, uh anyway, I want to say that we as uh community leaders, it should be always a goal of ours to be able to model I think acceptance and tolerance and the kind of community that we want to live in and the community that I would like to live in is one that accepts everybody and celebrates everybody, um we do know that this is an issue.
Cat Ranny, everybody, he's about to do something stupid.
Well, I'm sorry to disappoint you gentlemen, but you seem to have me confused with a character in a fictional show, now if you'll excuse me, my fondue is just about-
So yeah, I'm working with Tony, I'm up here uh now you know John Flynn, you know who John, huh?
He's sick.
Yeah, yeah, well, I got this cold man, so I had to come up here to recover, I was just down there two days ago and uh now they got, you know who Oscar Martinez is?
What's going on, are they trying to kill you, Ty?
Uh dude, they're doing, they're up to something, so uh well here's what I know, they're probably up to death but I don't know that for sure, that car driving by the house was a little weird.
Yeah, tell me what happened with that white car.
I'm gonna pop a video out real quick so everybody knows, huh? It just drove by, like, but it could be that, you know, hey, I live in Sonora, dude, huh?
Look at that guy in it, what was going on, should we see who was in it?
No, 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 okay, so I live, you know where the dome is downtown, the white, you know, the dome, the dome building, the old school?
Yeah, well, they uh, yeah, I know, yeah.
I live kinda like right under it, you know, just right in that area, right? So it could just be totally random, dude, like a million cars drive by my fucking house, right, you know, just I'm right on on kind of a main street there. Hey guys, this is real man, I don't know if that's that car, I just came up here to film a video, but I'm being stalked, you seen that white car, I'm gonna go follow him. So it could be random, but you know, it's a one of a kind, what kind of car is that? Bentley or what is it? Oh, what kind of car is that? What kind of car is that?
It's called Lexus.
Oh, that's a Lexus?
And they got a scanner on it, I don't know if you seen the scanner for the scanner, that's all I know it's hers, there's little scanners there, and they just pulled all the tip off their cars and their names, so I know that I'm costing them money, I'm gonna find out where they're setting up, they got, they got, this was a scam shop, so I gotta find out where their process is going.
Alright, well, I'm uh, I, yeah, they're trying to, while they, they're using these protective orders, see I'm fighting them and it's just so corrupt dude, it's like nothing, I mean they can fucking file fraudulent documents all day, uh they can just go down and get a protective order to keep me from speaking or out of the government buildings and now they're trying to say I'm a threat and they talk to other people, they're trying to build this case against me, this is what threw me in prison dude, so you know, and that combined with Jaren Brandon dude-
Don't talk to anybody on the phone or anything, Ty, about anything, I don't care how close you think they are, you be careful who you talk to, you stay with just a couple friends.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm staying down in uh, I'm down in Oakdale, man, I'm up here right, I mean I got, hey, look, here's the deal though dude, here's the deal, bottom line man, I'm giving them one week man, because I ain't living like this man, you telling me Jaren fucking Brandon's gonna take me fucking down and kick me out of this county dude? Dude, that's why I put my story out so everybody fucking knows why what happened, because that happened like that brother, you're taking these pedophile fucking judges brother, they're, they're gonna get what's coming to them brother.
Yeah, I'll give you that lady in the corner to carry loose and have her address and then she's a friend of Jaren's and she, and she managed to get you stoned at the end of the road.
No, wait, wait, what does she do, she works at the court?
No.
Carry loose, no, she's a drug dealer, right?
Yeah, she, she's fired, she's fucking a fag.
Alright.
Three loosees were fired, Doug loose runs the dance floor, but he does it, it's nothing more than a facade, I'm the next door to him, I know, I watched him, and it got really powerful, and they're good friends with Jaren, I'll write up a little synopsis and you can put in your thing about him.
Well, what, now you've talked to the cops, right, so I mean your name is out there, right, with these guys?
Why that felony do it, because I got a background, Ty.
Yeah, well, I got a background too dude, so they just- Huh?
They listen to like, why, they're not gonna listen to me, dude.
Yeah, well, they're not gonna listen to me, I mean, I don't even talk to those fuckers man, but-
Yeah.
I mean, I throw shit at them, like, hey man, you should look at this, but I mean, they're not gonna, like, dude, the whole, they're not gonna investigate themselves, you know what I'm saying, it's all convoluted and fucking-
Fired on the prison for gun provider.
You did what?
They got a couple people, you know, tried to bail the shot.
Alright, well, uh, yeah dude, this uh-
I don't have a pretty picture of background, we got a lot of violence, you know, uh silent service and everything, dude.
Who does?
They all had a gun and they're pieces of shit, I don't regret one moment.
Where do you live at, okay, where are you living at Columbia?
I live right near them.
What road, like, I, uh, 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 there's two main, what are the, what's that road out there, that Italian bar?
No, Paris Ferry.
Okay, Paris Ferry.
Yeah, go on their address, it'll show you everything, it'll show you the back of the ferry, it's looking through, the size of this house, he's got a million dollar house there, he's paid off it, he built over dope and he's had Jaren help him. What you're chasing is nothing, what I know can put him in jail. And destroy his career, destroy his career.
Alright.
Because he's a silent partner, but the only way he's a partner is that he's connected with the sheriff's department and they'd look the other way. Because Jaren said, oh yeah, that Johnson down there's a troublemaker, he's harassing the loosees, no, the loosees were harassing me this whole time, but they portrayed me as the one that was harassing, what, because I, because I'm upset because he pulled a gun when my wife went over there with a card and a bottle of wine? Come on, come on, I didn't call the cops, I was trying to get along with my neighbors, I just moved out here, this is like 11 years ago, the dope's been going on for a while and now Jaren got hooked up with it and he supports him, you know, the little gay boy, whatever, he's, I mean, he's only doing it because he's making money and they pay cash, they pay cash, they got dope, I mean, they're all, these aren't, these aren't, these aren't guys with tattoos and shit like that, these are all people that are very, you see the car they drive.
Yeah.
Okay, you're not talking about stomach of the earth, they're a high-class dope dealing people, but I'm trying to, I just downed uh some bikers I'm gonna get into it with because I'm gonna explain to them, he's been calling the cops on me dude, harassing me and he's doing dope, you can't do both, and these guys are gonna go, no you can't, you do one or the other.
Yeah, yeah.
He's a poor feller and a dope dealer, and that's what he is over there, I left today, go to dinner somehow, you are throwing, you look the fuck to somebody here and my freaking friend idiot, you take a picture, a piece of crap.
Well, hey, I gotta get-
And he didn't even take a freaking picture of them with all the shit they were moving.
Alright, well, hey, let me, I gotta, I'm doing all this legal stuff with Tony and we're coming after these people dude, like, I got, I mean, I hope this all works dude, none of them are bonded, we actually, I claimed all the seats dude in California man, the governor, none of them are bonded and everyone's freaking out dude.
I know you're doing good because they're trying to get corners against you, all that money I gotta go.
Yeah, yeah, we're doing great dude, but uh right now it's like they're coming at me, so I-
You got a dog because they're trying to put people who are on you, what you do today.
Yeah, yeah, that's when you know you're over the target, but at the same time, this is-
That's when you're getting close to the skin.
I'm already on it dude, I already have it, I've, I've found it, I've got multiple things, so I'm dropping everything on the video, everything that happened and then I'm gonna step back and I'm like, I'm not gonna say it and I, it's not a threat, like, I'm, it's not like I'm gonna give you 48 hours to fucking clear this up or I'm coming in there like fucking Rambo, it's like, you guys got 48 hours man, I mean, I'm not gonna tell you what's gonna happen, but me and Tony are doing it, you know, legally, lawfully.
Looked some guy up in Merrill Road, the sheriffs.
Yeah, in Groveland?
Looked there working and he shot some guy, I heard the shot, I heard three shots, they said there was only one, but he shot at him three times.
Where was that?
I was working on the next road, on a, on a, on a generator over there.
In Groveland, where all that happened?
Merrill Road, yeah, Groveland, over there.
Did the guy get, did, did they kill him?
Yeah, they killed him.
For what?
He was, he was, they, yeah, he, I guess he was, they said he was running but he was sitting down.
Yeah, they shot him for fucking running?
I think they shot him in the back, you gotta be careful dude. Hey, hey, what's going on? Okay, I gotta go, Ty.
Alright, well, hey, I'm not an operator dude, like, I've done, I've done living like this man, so uh I'm putting my story out, bro, and uh keep, keep following, okay? Alright, because I'm not putting up with this shit, brother, okay, my story's out and if it cracks off one way or another, bro, I mean, I'm just saying, here's my story, what the fuck was I supposed to do, dude, I ain't gotta be fucking chased around town by this fucking gay faggot and this fucking- Okay, today is what, March 2nd, Saturday?
Today's March 3rd, Sunday, March 3rd, 2024.
Let's start from the top, March, go ahead.
Today, the date is uh Sunday, March 3rd, 2024.
And John, what happened uh last uh what, Monday, you went to the county facility? And John, what happened uh, last uh, what, Monday? You went to the county facility?
Tuesday.
Well, you were there Monday. You said it was posted.
Oh, 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 you're talking about that. Okay, the uh, Monday. Last Mon- Monday on the um, 26th of February. I had a friend of mine after doing shopping with me to um. Make a drop off my ballot for voting. And I voted for uh, Tanya Karstner. As I'm in District One. And um. And then uh, the outs, as I was leaving, the outside bulletin. Outside posted the agenda. For 2027. That was Tuesday, 2027, 2024. What was gonna take place that? That day. And it said that somebody had made threats to county personnel. And county property.
Well, that's me. That's, that's somebody's me. They're accusing me of making threats to property and, and that I'm gonna go over there and, and kill them. Or use a sniper rifle right out of this window or something crazy like that, but that isn't. The case, is it, John?
No.
Right? Don't get freaked out dude. I just talk the way it is. I think I'm gonna go fucking kill him, right? Maybe use some AnFO, ammonium nitrate fucking fuel oil. That's what's on the record. Keep going.
And um. So they were saying, so the sheriff, Sheriff Phil Pulli, Under Sheriff Neil Evans and Captain David Big. Vaca, Vaca.
Vasquez, just call him that. I don't know what his fucking name is. Go.
But anyway, and the county council, Sarah Corolla and Christopher Schmidt. And the board of supervisors. And the, the posting outside said it was closed to the general public. And there was, and then they would resume normally at nine AM.
Is that what it said?
Yeah.
Is that on the uh, paperwork? The pa, no, show that paperwork again. Well, we already have that. Don't worry about it. I have that, but is.
But that did not reflect when I came in that morning.
Yeah, it was a hidden, I mean, the video shows nobody's in that room.
Trying to tell you, when I came in that, I got there about no, um, eight, 18, on the fourth floor. And I got a, uh, I sat there and waited and they were supposed to open up at nine AM. They didn't. It was nine 13 AM. About nine 20, they got the, finally got. The door open. They were, they didn't, and I got a copy of the minutes, not the minutes, the agenda. And it did not reflect. And I just kept going through and I said, wait a minute, where is this? There was also a code attached and it seemed like a very long code, but not, not, and David Goldenberg. So they started talking about. Staff reports when they finally broke at uh, ni- uh, nine four, or 10:47. And they said, uh, we could take a break now or go on. He said, no, let's just take a break. And I, and I went up to David uh, Goldenberg and I said, what happened to the pledge of allegiance and public comment? And so I changed my mind on the uh. The uh, agenda and we had it this morning at uh, eight AM.
So it was not a 24 hour note and it was posted. It was, you had it, you had it posted. So they did it to trick you. And then what happened? Because you didn't even know this until you saw the video. Who did they bring in?
Uh, Ms. Dow.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm very happy to see you take up the. Threat item. Um, I've been very uncomfortable coming to these meetings over the past few months. Um, several of you have talked to me and thought perhaps I should. Take on the issue from the podium and there is no way I'd be crazy enough to do that. Um, I did make an arrangement to sit down for. Lunch with one particular person, even though everyone in this room advised me not to. And I have to say, I got absolutely nowhere. I couldn't even get a word in edgewise and I had to listen to the same. Crapola that we have to listen to in this room. So I wasn't able to affect any change or make a difference. I just wasted my time. But it's very concerning to me and I think the. I'm aware there's a restraining order and I think it needs to be extended to. More people. Especially the five of you. And I think the distance needs to be increased. And I hope you come to some. At least tentative agreement and a plan during your session. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to speak on closed session items? Okay, seeing none, we are going to uh, go into closed session at this time. Um. The timing, uh, a little difficult to tell, you know, but uh. Anticipate.
Missed out.
Okay, and she talked about you.
She talked about me and everybody told her not to do it. They were right. She shouldn't have talked to me. Because you, there's a serial ticket, what did you call?
Serial communications.
Serial communication.
What, no, 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 no. What happened? I'll explain that dude. Don't, don't try to explain something you don't know.
And anyways, it's illegal terminology. And um. And so David, and I said, hey, I got cheated out. There was no 24 hours and they changed the agenda. On the paperwork.
Go back to Ms. Dow. She said, yeah, you guys met at the senior citizen center. What day was that?
That was on the, um.
Oh, don't worry about it. Just don't worry about it. It's not critical. Go.
Okay, it was the Thursday before the board meeting. Of February.
Alright.
And she said, she came over to me. She offered me a Union Democratic paper. I thanked her for it. She also said that Ty Robbins videos were garbled. She didn't understand. I said, well, that's her opinion. But then I said, all his legal paper is spot on.
Yeah.
He's quoting state Supreme Court rulings.
But you've also witnessed all the corruption.
And the corruption.
I mean, I can't even file in that. They, they won't even file my paperwork, right? And they have a hearing. They won't give me a, a, a Zoom call. I wasn't certain. The sheriffs came here. We got that already recorded. We don't need to reiterate that. And uh, so they came here, all this intimidation. And I've reported. Uh, all kinds of stuff. Now you've heard these phone calls that uh. The one that you did hear that was recorded, but you've heard the other stuff too. And you've heard me complaining about being stalked. Even before the white car or the sheriff came here, right? And the sheriff obviously knew I was staying here. There was some sort of a, uh. Reconnaissance, right? To where I'm at and pinpointing me. Now, what have I done wrong, John? Have I actually really made a threat that I'm gonna go kill anybody or use explosives?
I explained to.
What about drones? Anything like that? Killer drones? No? That's what they're saying. Keep on going.
I talked to Ms. Dow and I explained to her that um. The US Supreme Court just ruled. Uh, on December 23rd that everything that uh. Is legal, is protected for.
That's right. Oh, yeah.
Criticize your government leaders.
Yeah, yeah, no, you could, you could say everything that I'm saying. And I, I just never said I was gonna kill anybody, right? If I did, I would have been arrested and jailed. So they're, they're, they're using protective orders to quash me. Now have they investigated any?
The child trafficking?
There's none, nothing on that. What about drug dealing? Now we have uh, fentanyl and marijuana. Is that a critical thing? People, people.
You got kids around?
Well, people, it was just in the two days in a row, uh, fentanyl related things. A girl from Columbia strung out on meth. So this is all happening in Jared Brown's district. And he parties with these people and the neighbors are complaining. And he's gotta go take care of some business today. I don't wanna get the video out, the rain and this and that. But there were, the sheriff department was over at that house on Forest Hill Road in Columbia. Now, it seems to me that they're clearly covering it up, that they got video surveillance of all that. They got cameras. And we'll get that in due time. And I gotta put the recording out right now. John's heard this. He could back me up. Am I, am I lying? Do I say her and make this stuff up? Is that what's going on?
No, we, I heard the recording, the, when you got from your, the neighbor. And um, also, but you see, um. The US Supreme, all of it, and I want to say all over the country, people are expressing themselves because of that US Supreme Court rule. They're not threats.
Well, before that, before that ruling came out, all that ruling did is confirm New York Times v Sullivan.
Right.
Right? And that means that the threshold for criticizing especially public officials. And Ms. Dow's now a public official. What is her role, John? You've been going to these meetings. Is she an employee for the county? What's her role? I see her.
She's a spy.
Well, she, she acts like she runs that, she goes and it mingles and has free reign of uh, of the board supervisor and, and so what's, that's the serial communications because she even admitted that more than one talked to her. And this was some sort of a, a obvious conspiracy. That's a conspiracy. That's two or more people conspiring to do something.
Right.
Colluding. To not only mess with me, but to mess with you and your rights. And you, hey, what's, what's the penalty for civil rights violations, John? On, uh, what, you know, the penalty?
Oh, well, if you had, it's committing treason.
Yes.
Treason is death by hanging. If the judge orders.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, you guys, got these uh, protective orders, three of them. One from Sarah Corolla, one from uh, Christopher Schmidt. And one from the county. So they're trying to keep me out of the government meetings and, you know, stuff like that. They've been editing everything, everything that we said. We've had to uh. Put on YouTube here to show that they're editing the, the the uh, audio, video, the minutes, uh. You know, it's, it's totally scandalous. So Sarah Corolla, uh, in her protective order. Uh, claims to uh. And Christopher Schmidt argue that uh, song lyrics. You know, from uh. From these songs that I'm using like Johnny Cash and Led Zeppelin. Here's a, the protective order says, uh, Robin may not enter Sarah Corolla or Christopher Schmidt's place of employment located on that number two Green Street, Sonora, California, except to attend public, public meetings. Well, often if I have to go in there for other business, you know, voting, registration. Anything. I have uh, the right to be in that building. I haven't made it a single threat. Then when people making threats is Sarah Corolla and Christopher Schmidt against me and John Flynn. For uh, legal work that they insisted we serve them in person. And then they harassed John Flynn. And that started the whole thing. And I also wanna point out. Um. What happened with uh, Jared Brandon right after he got the endorsement from the Twalome County Sheriff when I had three uh, deputies show up at John Flynn's house trying to serve me. Protective orders. And uh. Uh, they came in force. They didn't need to come in such a way. It was very uh. You know, meant for intimidation purposes. And uh. I'm gonna show you all that. Back to the restraining orders. Just wanted to show you that. Um, all the evidence really used in this locate, in this protective order. Is all stuff that I've sent them. You know, their, their affidavits, what I wanted to say. You know. Yeah, they're, they're trying to use uh, charges against me that have been. Uh, that are null and void. The judge is throwing off. I'm gonna prove all that in five minutes. And. And uh. Let's go to the uh, part here that it talks about the music.
And I heard as it were, the noise of thunder. One of the four beasts saying, come and see. And I saw, and behold, a white horse.
There's a man going around taking names. And he decides who to free and who to blame. Everybody won't be treated all the same. There'll be a golden ladder reaching down. When the man comes around.
And they're gonna, a closed meeting, they're gonna discuss. Somebody is, has made threats against uh, county personnel, county buildings and the courthouse. And they were gonna discuss it with the sheriff department, the undersheriff. And David Vicas, captain is taking over as sheriff on the first. And the county council and the board of supervisors. Okay. And I should have gone back and got a coffee, but anyways, I went and called you. Then I got home, I called you. And then you found it. And you posted it on your video, your latest one.
Yeah.
Go change that. That's evidence right there. That is hardcore. That's concrete evidence. And then you, you had it in the beginning and then repeated it. A second time. I was able to read that on my smartphone. That it said just what I told you. When I, and that was this morning. I actually saw it this morning, but on Tuesday when I went. What I told you, which is posted on, was not what they discussed. Yeah, I did, but it's not. But it's not what I saw on Monday.
Two, one, go.
Alright, at the, uh, congratulating Bill Pulli at the board meeting.
On what day?
Wednesday, February 27th, 2024. And uh, all the congratulations and blah, blah, blah.
So Bill Pulli is a sheriff and he retired. Just gotta give, give a backup.
34 years of law enforcement.
Okay, so he's been, how, how long has he been the sheriff here? About 10 years?
11 years. Or 10, 10, 11 years.
So he retired and then they gave him a plaque and all that. What happened? Jared Brandon was involved?
Oh, well, they gave a big plaque to Jared Brandon to give to Bill Pulli. Except the sheriff association uh. Uh, endorsed him, which was odd because there's an allegation now. That there is an illegal marijuana grow up above Twain Hard or I don't know.
So manufacturing to put the fentanyl in it. The grow isn't the problem. It's putting them uh.
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that kinda, but I heard it on your, the Twalome County scandal website.
Alright, yeah, that's what's going on. Yeah, pretty, pretty crazy that Jared Brandon gives the sheriff, outgoing sheriff, a big plaque after they just raided my house. And cover up his uh, his uh, drug connection.
He's got, yeah, I, I heard something and so. Uh, that needs to be looked at. Probably the federal marshals should look into this.
Yeah, they are. I'm making complaints, but I think I wanna bring it back to the county, the citizen grand jury, cause I don't trust them, right? You understand?
I understand.
Okay, that's it. Say the date. Put your hat on.
Wednesday, February 28th. Uh, 2024.
Okay, go ahead. What were you gonna say?
Uh, I spoke to Neil Evans in the boardroom.
Who's Neil Evans?
Uh, he's the undersheriff of Twalome County. And he said, I talked to him, that after those three sheriff that showed up on the first. I said it was a week later, but it, you know, it was about two weeks to whatever. But I said that uh, you split. And he said, he's not in the county. No, he's gone. He, and that was overwhelming. Three heavily armed sheriff deputies.
Okay, anything important?
To serve protective orders.
Okay, I don't. You already said that. Anything more?
Um, that there was nothing more. I did mention my neighbor that if they had come in and there was a firefight for some reason.
Yeah.
You don't need three. One could have done it. And.
Yeah, I mean, there's a school right here.
There is a daycare.
And a house right here, you know, bullets will be flying through there. There's a school. There's a fire department people. There's houses right here within a 300 degree uh, circle. That if something did crack off. People, you know, kids over here.
There's kids next door. And I told the lady there. And I said, this was crazy and there are children out there. I mean, what kind of concept? They don't even, don't they take any, where they're surrounding?
Yeah, it was bullshit. It was bullshit intimidation and it backfired. Totally backfired on them. Now they got a, a citizen review board, uh, people's review board, I'm calling it. Up their ass. Yeah, I'm crawling up your ass on everything, investigating every goddamn thing that they've done for the last, I don't know, 15, 20 years.
Now, I went to the uh, board meeting. Uh, on Monday, I.
What day?
That was Monday was on the 26th. I mailed my uh, voting ballot. And then I was looked at the outside bulletin board and it had the agenda. And it said that there were um. Someone was making threats to county employees. And to the uh, county property and or to the uh, courthouse, the new courthouse.
Yeah.
And I'm saying, I went to, on Monday, I went to the um. Did my errands. Had a friend of mine help me out.
Monday the what? Just so they.
Monday the 26th of February.
2024.
2024.
Put that in there.
And I mailed my ballot and I came out and I read the um. Uh, the uh, agenda inside the outside, outside uh, uh, bulletin board.
Mm-hmm. At city, at the, uh, not city hall, but the county office building.
At the county office, at two South Green Street, okay?
Alright.
And it said, there were three per, and they said, there's gonna be a special board meeting on the 27th. With the uh, sheriff, Pulli, Neil Evans and um.
The new guy?
David Ver- Vicas. He's Captain Vicas, who's gonna be the sheriff on the first of March of 2024. And with uh, Sarah, legal counsel, which we assume Sarah Corolla and Christopher Schmidt. And the board of supervisor. And that was from eight to, on the Tuesday of, of February 27th, from eight to nine AM. And that's, and it's, it was closed to the public. And that's what I had in my head. That was the last thing. So I laughed and went home and then I, I called Utah, I called Ty. And then um. I, I went and then when I got the minutes. Or the, not the minutes, not the improvements, I got the agenda. It didn't say anything like that. There was nothing there. I'm saying that was all deleted.
Hang on, I know where it would be. Public hearing. So it's not on here?
It's not on here. They deleted all that. So it's another violation and there's a deliberate cover up going on.
Wow, okay, now I understand. Because John Flynn collects the paper ones.
I always do.
It's not on there. Okay, yeah, it would have been on here and I'm not seeing.
Been right here. It would have been right there. And it's. And there was a code, but I saw a code that said six ply. It was a real long code.
Okay, let me post that.
And I had nothing to write with.
So I'm letting everybody know, John Flynn knows and a whole bunch of other people, that if something happens to me, these guys are out to get me. 27th, right? There's the agenda. Uh, that agenda does show. The um. Twenty-seventh, right? There's the agenda. That agenda does show the, you know, this one's accurate. At least it was. We'll come back to that. The video, let's go there, because that wasn't working, the link. You guys tend to do this, you know? Let's see if it works now. Yeah, network error. So, you know, they make it as hard as possible. So then you gotta go out here to the, uh, Access TV. Let's, let's look at the agenda real quick. Let's load up. Take some, anyhow, Access TV is where the, let's wait for the. Okay, here's the agenda that they're posting. And let's see if it's accurate. Yeah, threat to pu, there, there it is. Threat to public safety. So it's on that agenda. Video doesn't work, but if you go here to video archive, down here, somewhere, there it is. Let's watch this. Because Ms. Dow made a comment.
Good morning. Welcome to the February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four Board of Supervisors Meeting Special Agenda. Due to the timing of the meeting, we're, we're still shaking out the, getting that all squared up. Anyways, welcome. We early start today because we have some items we're going to do before regular board business. But to start with, I've asked Supervisor Brandon to leave us in the pledge. Other than that, I will call for oral communications. For this is a chance for the public to come up and speak. Did I? Okay, this chance for the public to come up and speak on any items that are not on the agenda. So is there anybody that wishes to speak under oral communications? Okay, seeing none. Excuse me. So what we've got, I'll ask the, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go into closed session, before we start the regular.
The closed session items. So please come up. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm very happy to see you take up the threat item. I've been very uncomfortable coming to these meetings over the past few months. Several of you have talked to me and thought perhaps I should take on the issue from the podium. And there's no way I'd be crazy enough to do that. I did make an arrangement to sit down for lunch with one particular person, even though everyone in this room advised me not to. And I have to say, I got absolutely nowhere. I couldn't even get a word in edgewise. And I had to listen to the same crapola that we have to listen to in this room. So I wasn't able to affect and change or make a difference. I just wasted my time. But it's very concerning to me. And I think the, I'm aware there's a restraining order, and I think it needs to be extended to more people, especially the five of you. And I think the distance needs to be increased. And I hope you come to some, at least tentative agreement and a plan during your session. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to speak on closed session items? Okay, seeing none, we are going to go into closed.
Okay, you guys, got hit with these protective orders, three of them, one from Sarah Corillo, one from Christopher Schmidt, and one from the county. So they're trying to keep me out of the meetings and, you know, stuff like that. They've been editing everything, everything that we said. We've had to put on YouTube here to show that they're editing the, the audio, video, the minutes. You know, this is totally scandalous. So Sarah Corillo, in her protective order, claims to, and Christopher Schmidt argue that song lyrics, you know, from, from these songs that I'm using, like Johnny Cash and Led Zeppelin. Here's a, the protective order says, Robin may not enter Sarah Corillo or Christopher Schmidt's place of employment located on that number two Green Street, Sonora, California, except to attend public, public meetings. Well, often if I have to go in there for other business, you know, voting, registration, anything, I have the right to be in that building. I haven't made it a single threat. The only people making threats is Sarah Corillo and Christopher Schmidt against me and John Flynn for legal work that they insisted we serve them in person. And then they harassed John Flynn. And that started the whole thing. And I also want to point out what happened with Jaren Brandon, right after he got the endorsement from the Twalome County Sheriff, when I had three deputies show up at John Flynn's house trying to serve me protective orders. And they came in force. They didn't need to come in such a way. It was very, you know, meant for intimidation purposes. And I'm going to show you all that. Back to the restraining orders. Just wanted to show you that all the evidence really used in this locate, in this protective order is all stuff that I've sent them. You know, their affidavits, wanted to say, you know, yeah, they're, they're trying to use charges against me that have been, that are null and void. The judge is throwing off. I'm going to prove all that in five minutes. And I'm going to show you I'm innocent in less than five minutes. I got this case in federal court because it's gone through the California system. And this is how fucked up it is. I mean, it's, it's absolutely a cesspool. They're gonna destroy a man's life over the same stuff as Twalome County, right? So I've exposed corruption. And they're gonna destroy the whistleblower. And not this time, not this time, you're not. And these guys are gonna be paying for it. It's treason. Treason is a death penalty. So right here, I just want to cut in real quick. Eighteen US Code. This is federal code two forty-one. Okay, so eighteen USC, US Code, two forty-one, conspiracy against rights. Just explains if two or more persons conspire to injure, oppress, threaten, or intimidate any other person for exercising any right secured to him by the Constitution or laws of the United States. And the penalty right here is death. Okay, so that's that one. And same thing with two forty-two. It's basically very similar. You know, deprivation of rights, under color of law, very similar. If you're violating somebody's rights, it's a death sentence. And we're not gonna ever have this shit again, okay? So I've had to suffer through this. I didn't have to fire a single bullet. And they're gonna die. I want to see them hang in fucking public. And that's what we're gonna do. So, uh, let's see if I can explain this in less than five minutes without a whole bunch of rhetoric, okay? I don't like these people, man. Okay? And they know it. And they're afraid of me. Because of what they did. You know, if you molest them, molest my kid, dude, you're gonna be afraid of me, right? You fucking violate my rights, you're gonna be afraid of me, man, because you know what's coming. And what's coming is not good for you. Yeah, these guys, they can't even do a criminal thing. They had to go get indictment. So an indictment is reserved for usually going after something in politics, where you can be on the down low. Federal court uses indictments. But in California, normally you'd have a preliminary hearing, and you can present your evidence before the trial ever gets started. So they didn't let me do any of that. This is a hit job because I was doing a recall against Berg Pearson. I'll show you all that stuff. So how in the hell can Berg Pearson be prosecuting me? You know what I mean? For a DUI. So how does a DUI that's fabricated, and a driving on suspended that was reversed, right, turn into a seven year prison sentence? Well, that's why the California Republic got started shit like this. Alright, so these motherfuckers are going to prison. Maybe they should just go to prison and live there, you know? I, I, I want to see him die, because that's, you know, that's kind of, but I'd rather see him just go to prison. Get what's coming to you, you know, die that way. I'd rather see him suffer. Right there, people. We heard a lot of testimony attesting to the fact that he never says, I'm going to kill you. I mean, he always refers to other groups or whatever, you know? I mean, sure, yeah, people, people are gonna kill pedophiles, people are gonna kill corrupt judges all the time, you know? Cops get shot every day. So, oh, well, you know, I mean, that's, that's life, right? So I didn't threaten to kill anybody. So why was I in prison? Right? Because I said fuck you, or whatever. Well, I'm allowed to say fuck you. And remember, I haven't grabbed an AR-15 and retaliated against you. I won you legally. So it's time to give up now. There's no more bullshit. You're out of here. All of you. Twalome County, Plasterville, all you motherfuckers. This piece of shit, Dale Gomes, yeah. I got a thing for him. I won't discuss it out here, but something's coming for him. So never said anything. There's a whole list of things. But we'll just get to the two, right there. Actually innocent, actually innocent. Didn't say any threats. And this piece of shit judge was kicked off. He's like Seabird. A big fat, well, Seabird's obese. This guy isn't the size of Seabird. But it's the same mindset. That these guys think they're God, and they, they don't, there's nobody up there, when these guys get out of control, that really checks them, right? That's what the Second Amendment is for. You know, when, when, when your government becomes so tyrannical, what is what we have now? But we didn't need to do that. We, we ratified this, rectified this with legal and lawful action. Now, they're gonna act like a, like a cat, you know, cornered, you know? And they're gonna lash out, which is what they're doing. But who knows? Who knows how far this is gonna go? Comment on the protest? No comment? About the corruption? Miss Passau?
Well, people driving through downtown Carson City are accustomed to seeing people brandishing signs protesting various issues. But they've never seen a huge crime scene taped to pour in front of the Attorney General's office. The banner and various other signs were the work of a group of people united by their collective belief that the Nevada justice system is corrupt. Their complaints range from alleged suppression of evidence by Washo D.A. Dagamic to failure to support whistleblowers in state government. All of them pointed to a recent study that ranked Nevada forty-second among the states for risk of corruption due to lack of legal restraints and transparency.
This is the law right here. And if these come out here and pull me out of this meeting, you had better read this, chief, because he's telling you to break the law. Is like, what am I going for? What am I going for? No, no, his rules and decorum violate the law. Oh, you're gonna arrest me? Oh, you're gonna arrest me?
You have the privilege to speak your mind.
Privilege? You worked me, boy, you need to remember that. That's your warning.
Okay, I'm, I'm telling you.
Now rewind my clock while I finish my statement.
I can talk like that. It's the First Amendment.
It's a First Amendment right.
You're violating the rules of decorum.
You're gonna go to jail if you do that.
I'm gonna be arrested, fine. Okay, here. Mr. Mayor of City Council, my name is CJ Grisham. I'm a civil rights attorney here in Texas. And uh, what I just witnessed was a violation of Mr. Followwell's rights. Your rules of decorum are unconstitutional and they're setting the city up, you individually, you individually, for liability. Because he has the right to say, "Fuck, shit, damn, bitch, cunt, whatever." He has the right to say all of those words because it is a First Amendment right. This is the law right here. And if these chiefs come out here and pull me out of this meeting, you had better read this, chief, because he's telling you to break the law.
A Ranzus Pass, Texas City Council recently voted in a new rule that says that one can't cuss during public comment in public meetings or criticize their elected officials. The intent was to silence people who have recently been critical of the local government. On the evening of January 16th, 2023, Jason Followwell went into the public meeting with his attorney CJ Grisham to exercise his First Amendment rights during their time at public comment. As expected, Jason was removed from the building under a threat of violence by the police by orders given from the mayor. Then his lawyer CJ Grisham stands up and reads them case law on the matter and reads an exact quote from the case law saying that officers do not have qualified immunity when they arrest someone for cussing in public. Immediately following these warnings from the civil rights attorney CJ Grisham, the police remove attorney CJ Grisham from the meeting under threat of violence as well.
Jason Followwell, one of the only people in the room to tell you the truth. By the way, your citizens' comments, stuff, and bullshit, you can use everything you can say with not a problem. I can personally affront you, cuss at you whatever I want, and you have to listen to me because you work for me. You need to remember that, boy. All right. Chief Blanchard, you piece of shit. Chief Blanchard, $12.47, you stand up. Excuse me?
I just read you.
And you're wrong, you're lying in public.
I'm not gonna put up.
I'm not gonna put up.
Any defamation, character.
That's not defamation, that's fact.
I, I don't care. I'm not gonna put up with no propaganda or anything. You either act like an adult and speak right to everybody that's here, and you have the privilege to speak your mind.
Privilege? You worked for me, boy, you need to remember that.
Go ahead.
That's your warning.
Okay, I'm, I'm telling you.
Now rewind my talk while I finish my statement.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Chief Blanchard, $1,247 fitted suit you stole from the company, from us. You work for us. On 9/10/23. Kerry Scruggs, you lied in public. Kerry Scruggs on Facebook stated that his personally fitted suits were pre-approved by the council and manager in 2011. Jason Knight's dad was that mayor, was that mayor then. Guess what he said, Kerry? Never approved that. Laugh at me all you want. I got a whole bunch of cops in here. Modifications to the policy manual took place almost 40 days after I complained about him. Y'all modified it. Why did y'all modify it? You know when it was modified before, Kerry? Not 2011, I do. 2019, 2014, 2004. You lied in public. Even with the recent modifications, a Class A uniform is the highest uniform APB has, and it is not a suit, you scumbag. Uniform Class A. Did you have a dress hat? No, you did not. Long sleeves, did you have, did you have that? Yes, you did. Tights, trousers, yes. I mean, maybe. Black belt. I'm talking, it's my turn to talk.
Personal attack once again, Mayor.
Please, will you, I don't give a crap what you say, you piece of shit.
Okay, now.
I can talk like that. It's a First Amendment right.
You're violating the rules of decorum.
See, Blanchard, what person do you write that I violate? No, I'm not, he's the cop, you tell me.
I'm not.
What, what First Amendment right did I violate?
I'm not.
I'm asking you a question.
You're gonna be asked to walk out.
Am I under arrest or arrest?
You're gonna go to jail if you do that.
I'm gonna be arrested, fine. Okay, here. All right, go. Uh, Mr. Mayor of City Council, my name is CJ Grisham. I'm a civil rights attorney here in Texas. And uh, what I just witnessed was a violation of Mr. Followwell's rights. Uh, let me read something to you. Arresting someone in retaliation for the exercise of free speech rights is sufficient to chill speech as an understatement. This is Beck v. City of Upland. Uh, arguing, even if done loudly, with a profane or offensive language, will, language will not in and of itself constitute disorderly conduct. That's Payne v. Polly. Swear words do not provide probable cause for an arrest for disorderly conduct because the words as a matter of law are not fighting words. Johnson v. Campbell. I could go on, Mr. Mayor. Your rules of decorum are unconstitutional and they're setting the city up, you individually, you individually, for liability. Now, you will be seeing a letter from me, a demand letter for violating my client's rights just now because he has the right to say, "Fuck, shit, damn, bitch, cunt, whatever." He has the right to say all of those words because it is a First Amendment right. You can't do anything about it. Let me tell you something. The law has long established that arresting an individual for publicly displaying vulgarities violates the First Amendment. That's the Cohen case, 1969. Indeed, the Supreme Court recently held that a public school violated the free speech rights of a cheerleader by suspending her when she said things like, "Fuck school, fuck softball, fuck cheer, fuck everything." Then there was another, that's uh, Mahoy, Mahoney Area School District v. BL. Uh, there's also HSB Steelman saying that a police officer was not entitled to qualified immunity for arresting a plaintiff who said, "Fuck you." Did you hear that? No qualified immunity. So I can say fuck throughout my entire three minutes. I can say fuck again, and I can say fuck again, and there's nothing you can do about it because it's called expressive speech. We are allowed to express ourselves. We are allowed to fucking talk about what we think about you. If I think you, Mr. Mayor, are a tyrant, I can say that. If I think the city manager's a piece of shit, I can say that. It's protected. This is the case law. I don't give a shit what you think. The law is like, you escort me out, I'll sue you as well, Mr. Mayor. This is the law right here. And if these chiefs come out here and pull me out of this meeting, you had better read this, chief, because he's telling you to break the law.
No, I'm not.
Yeah. Now, where did that coward Kerry Scruggs go? Where did the coward Kerry Scruggs go? Is my three minutes up?
You're gone.
Is like, what am I gone for? What am I gone for?
You're violating the rules of the decorum.
No, no, his rules of decorum violate the law.
Goodbye, you're gonna go to jail for disrupting a public meeting.
Oh, you're gonna arrest me? Oh, you're gonna arrest me? Okay, so under the threat of arrest, you just violated my right, you piece of shit, cunt, motherfucker?
While they were dragging CJ out of the building, while they were forcing him out of the building under threat of violence, he kept saying, "I'm gonna sue you, I'm gonna sue you." And someone in the background, I don't know if it was an officer or the chief of police, said, "Oh, stop saying you're gonna sue me and just sue me." Uh, they, they couldn't care less. They really couldn't care less. I think it's pretty obvious why they don't care. They're genuinely not held accountable. These cops talk about, oh, you know, well, if we break the rules, then, you know, we get a write-up at work or we get sued. Um, with the rules that they're breaking, though, they're actually violating the law. And they're violating the life, liberty, and property of other people. They're violating the rights of other people. This is criminal. And so when they say that they're held accountable because they got a write-up at work or they got a reprimand or, you know, they, they got sued and the taxpayer paid out money, the officer themselves never, ever, ever faced the same kinds of consequences that you and I do for taking life, liberty, and property. And that is criminal charges. Absolutely nothing short of criminal charges for stuff like this will ever change this behavior. These guys sat here after being read case law saying that they have no qualified immunity for doing what they're doing, and they continued to do it anyways. Because they really, they don't care about qualified immunity. All it means is that they're gonna get sued, but who's really paying for that? You are. It's not them. They don't care. The only thing that is ever going to make these criminals care and stop violating the law is if they go to prison for it every single time. Federal statute 18 USC 242 says that it is illegal for a government official to violate somebody's rights under color of law. This statute can be used for every single rights violation. But in the last decade or so, it's only used a small handful of times and usually only when the rights violation results in death. I was under the impression that the entire reason that we created a government was so that we could have law and order that protects life, liberty, and property and a system that deals with those criminals that take life, liberty, and property. Unfortunately, what we have created does the exact opposite. It seems to be taking the absolute worst criminals among us and putting them in places of power and giving them immunity so that they aren't accountable to the law. I hate to tell you guys this, but the system that we created to deal with criminals has now become the largest, most well-funded organized crime syndicate in the history of the world.
Do you remember Rambo, part one? You know, John Rambo just wanted to get a sandwich? Yeah.
Where you headed?
Portland.
Portland is south. You said you were headed north.
You got someplace I can eat around here?
There's a diner about 30 miles up the highway.
Is there any law against me getting something here?
Yeah, me.
All right, you guys, it's uh, February 20th, '24. I'm Ty Robin and I'm telling my side of the story. I got hit with uh, three protective orders from uh, Topeka County County Council. That would be the two lawyers, Sir Corillo and Christopher J. Schmidt, who I am suing. And I've been uh, demanding that this case get resolved for no money originally. And uh, what this is all about, right now, they're trying to have me put in jail and arrested. And uh, who knows what else? They're probably trying to file some criminal charges for an alleged violation of this protective order that they hit me with. We're gonna get into all of that. Uh, how they used the sheriff right after I complained uh, about them not investigating any of the crimes, including mandatory investigations. But this protective order right here says, uh, and is very confusing because there's actually three of them, and as you can see, they're real thick because these are all the complaints I've been sending them about child pedophilia and uh, overcharging at the county dump and uh, violating people's rights, editing the minutes, uh, not, you know, editing the audio, video and the minutes. I'm gonna get into all of that, people. Uh, so they hit me with these protective orders, right? And it says that any communication with lawyers need to go through um, the county email system and be directed to council@topeka county. And no personal email accounts. Well, I don't have their personal email accounts. That would be like a Yahoo account or uh, uh, something like that, like a Google account. Personal, I don't know their personal accounts, phone numbers. And this thing is crazy, people. They're going so far in this protective order to say that I have an affair or uh, there's a sexual desire with Sarah Corillo. I think that lady is a witch and a cunt and a bitch. I have no desire to be with that lady. I only have a desire to end this litigation with Topeka County, and they just ended it on Friday by filing false documents in the court. And everything that they tried to do collapsed. You lost. The game is over. I've won this. For like the 10th time, people, all they can do is corruption, people. And by doing so, they just exposed all the corruption in Topeka County. And everybody is a victim, okay? Everybody in this county should be getting a refund from Waste Management. We have people that probably have all kinds of unlawful convictions like I have, and I'm getting that cleared up because the judge was kicked off the case. Seibert was kicked off this case and you wouldn't get off. This is just for a protective order. And they have framed me up on other protective orders where I was never even served. They won't do me my day in court. Everything about the court people in Topeka County is a sham, and you know it. I know it, and I'm gonna prove it. And I want you, no matter who you are, come to my website. Tell me your story about the sheriff department. Have you been beaten up? Have you been falsely arrested? Any problem with Topeka County, you come to me. None of these people are bonded. They don't hold office legit. They are called de facto. I'm calling them out, and what they're doing is they're not letting me file my paperwork in the courts. So we're doing it uh, through the state legislature. I'm filing a thing called a remonstrance, but we're taking it to the people because even the legislature, they're not in office in California legit. Or the entire country, because none of them hold office because it didn't take the proper oath. And then, I mean, it goes up. So right here, they, they didn't post the bonds, and their government crime insurance is a sham. As I'm gonna tell you, they falsified that in the meeting. Nobody was bonded to even do it in the first place. Even if we believe the story that they're telling us, that they did do this, it never went to the court, never had values assigned because it had to go to the court to get signed off by the presiding judge, which would have been Seibert or Seagerstrom in 2021. Then it would have been filed with Clark, the county recorder, Debbie Batista. None of this happened, people. It never happened from 1850. So the entire corporation of County of Topeka, which is a corporation commits different from Topeka County the place. So the government running this county is an artificial fake government. And we're taking it back. We're taking the republic back. I've called every seat in the state, including uh, the governor, Newsom. In every, every seat, every judge, every justice, the top justice, the chief justice for the California Supreme Court, I own your seat. Right? Everybody, the county, the sheriff, the district attorney, the uh, Attorney General, everybody. And I'm not doing an insurrection or a uh, sedition. We're not breaking this up. What we're doing is we're taking the Republic of California back. When you look at the California flag, bear, the bear on that flag, that bear, the name of the bear is called...
of the bear is called Monarch. Look that up, by the way. And right below Monarch, it says California Republic. And there's a constitution. And we're taking it back. It's for the people. And there's not gonna be any more of these crazy taxes, giving illegal immigrants benefits, sex changes, putting housing illegal immigrants. The whole agenda just ended, people. We won. And it ended right here in Tuolumne County. This is ground zero. This is what I've been saying, and my friend John Flynn, who's been attending these meetings. And I'm gonna prove everything. Some people think I'm fucking crazy, but I'm not. I went to high school here. Judge Seabrook was just kicked off my case, and he wouldn't recuse. And there's a long history of that, not just for me, but from lawyers, okay? You know, credible, you know, people that have been dealing with these people for years. And you're gonna hear the stories, and you're gonna hear real stories. I don't wanna hear your story. And I'm here to help you. And I've stuck my life out. I grew up here, went to high school, graduated, and here I am. And they wanted to destroy me, and they wanted to throw me back in prison, probably, and kill me. And I'm gonna tell you what they do to people and when they put you in there and how they kill you. And they failed. I believe in Jesus Christ. My middle name is Christian. So I just wanna clear that up right now, too, for anybody, okay? I don't have a particular religion. I just have faith. And I'll tell you something supernatural happened here, people. Every time that I open my mouth, something falls out of the sky. There's a portal that is open right now between me and my maker. And everybody thinks that I was about ready to go postal, go fucking crazy, man, and go take these motherfuckers out with the fucking AR-15, ammonium nitrate fuel oils, and fucking drones and crazy shit, dude, and it's all in the fucking court records. If you watched that movie Making a Murderer, that thing that was on Netflix, the series, I make that look like chickens play, and I'm actually innocent. And not only that, the way that they came at me, people, has literally backfired on Friday, the 16th of 2024, which was some very powerful numbers for me, because I was born on the 16th. It's my favorite number. You're about ready to hear something that's all true. I'm from here, and my grandpa's buried here, my dad's buried here, people. I haven't seen my kid in over, in the last 10 years. Jacob, my son, I've only seen him a handful of times because they took him away when I was in prison without any hearing. You're supposed to have a hearing, and I was supposed to have due process. This is my son right here. He's about 15 years old, okay? And they have destroyed me. And I'm gonna explain what's going on. I believe that these people are all connected because of who I took on in Nevada and what I'm all about, and the Freemasons and the Mormons, because they're both connected or behind us. And that's a fact. And I'm calling you out by your names. And everything that you have set out to do and your great plan has just backfired, not only here in Tuolumne County, California, the United States, but the world. The world is waking up, people. You need to fucking get off your phone and look at, if you are on your phone, you need to start paying attention to what's going on in Europe. They're cutting off our food right here in Tuolumne County. The climate action plan, people, is to take our fireplaces away, get us on electrical. They want us all on central bank digital currencies. Like I said, they're spraying our skies. They have the contract. Bill Gates has a contract right here in Tuolumne County for that. There's contracts to cut the trees down through Kodoma systems. And you see all these logging trucks going through here, and you think that that's going to a mill to be made for maybe housing or something like that, but it's not. It's being buried in the fucking desert, man, so that these corporations can take their, their money to buy carbon credits, but they're taking perfectly fine trees. And these motherfuckers that are out here like the guy, I can't think of, Mr. Buckley, whatever his name is, Buckley, John Buckley, maybe, with the Sierra Conservancy, Central Sierra, whatever they are. I mean, that guy's a motherfucker, man. He went over there to Calaveras County to monitor them during a controlled burn and burned down two great big sequoia redwoods, man. This guy is a motherfucker, dude, and don't believe a word he says. People, this is our county. My grandfather bought land here with the railroad people back in 30s, right there above Twain Heart in Comptons, and they built the house here. So they're buried here. I'm not going anywhere, okay? So that's what's up. This is my face right here, people. This is what it'd look like without a hat. And when I'm walking around town, I'm not afraid of anybody, man. I really'm not. The only people I am afraid of is the fucking government and the goddamn fucking sheriff who's, you know, I didn't have a problem with Bill Polley or any of them. I never even had, I've never even had a fucking parking ticket in this county that I can remember, man. That's me. This is Ty Robin, man. I had a beard in high school, and I used to buy everybody beer. I worked at the Willow Springs Market for Julius Flores, who was a great man. All right, you guys, it's February 19th. It's been a lot of stuff going on. I've been trying to get some updates. Everyone wants to know if I'm okay. What happened is I got hit with a bunch of protective orders about a week ago, and we'll be talking about that. They came primarily here from Sarah Corillo and Christopher Schmidt, who are lawyers for the county of Tuolumne. And it looked pretty, pretty bad, right? But what this is, is it's all the stuff I've sent to them, right? John, John Flynn's over here. What have I sent to them?
Well, you sent some, it's a, I have no idea how many pages it is, but it's about three stacks, very large black paper clips you smash in the back end. It's about this thick. And they, on February 1st, they, they, the Tuolumne County Sheriff Department showed up heavily armed, oh my God, very armed, bulletproof ass, armor plated one, armor plated two.
Banging on the door?
Wait, wait. And then they also, they were banging on the door, and, and this was, I was sound asleep, and I slept in the living room, and it says Sheriff Department. Well, I'm a dead sleep trying-
Early in the morning, pretty much. Well, early enough where it was pretty much-
Early for me, if I stay awake at the 2:00 AM in the morning.
Might have been, might have been, it might have been after 8 o'clock, to be honest with you. I can't remember. I was shell shocked when this happened, people. I've had this happen, and I've had my door broken into, and there's a whole story.
This is my interview, right? Now, look, I went to sleep on, I was reviewing the civilrightslawyer.com, it's a law firm in Virginia, on January 31st, and I fell asleep about 2:15 AM in the morning on February 1st. Then I woke up on February 1st about 7:10, and about 8:30, I went back to sleep, but I was looking at Luck Loster, another civil rights law firm, and other civil rights attorney on a 42 US, USC 1983 violation, never, never to say no consent to a police officer, be polite and cordial, and I am invoking my fifth amendment. And that's what I was reviewing. And then I went to sleep, and then I got a bam, 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 about 11:05 AM, and I wake up, Mr. Sheriff Department, can you open the door?
And you got to test it.
And-
Am I under arrest? What's going on? Is Mr. Robin here?
No, no, and he said, no, I'm not gonna open the door. I looked out the window, the front door, and I said, what? And he said, can you open the door? No. So I tried to get the side window open. Of course, that's broken as well in this place. So that wound up, so I went over to, by the fridge, we have a swamp car, and I opened and peeled it off, and I said, what do you want? And they said, oh, can you open the door? No. What do you want? Come over to the swamp car. Well, we have some paperwork for Mr. Robin. Is he here? And, well, I don't, you know, let me see. And he came in, look, we just need, and they come back, well, look, we just want to verify he's here.
And he said, yeah, I wasn't here. It was, how, how did they know I was here? What did they tell you? They, they said they spoke to the landlord?
No, I said, well, they said, Mr. Flynn, what are you doing? And it's, well, how'd you get my last name? And they said, we got it from the previous owner, but this is a rental.
Yeah, so that, that's a lie. And then-